Okay, it's 5 o'clock, Monday, November 19, 2018. I would like to call the meeting to order, please. Roqao, Mike Holden. Tony Corpie, here. Terry Murray. Roxanne Skokstedic, here. Michelle Hebner, here. Heather McBride. Ted Saxton. Kevin Grover.
Here.
Ella Barr Jeffries, quickly stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
If I can just point out there were, depending on if you have the electronic version or when you print it, we added three things today, number 25, 26, and 27. 25 is the hire of a fireman. 26 is hire of an assistant boys' baseball coach. And 27 is update of the concession agreement that was expired. So just want to make sure, other than that, I have no comment.
Anyone else, further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Open forum. Item one, public open forum.
We're going to flip the papers and have the presentations first because there's a scrimmage going on right now. So let's do student of the month.
Okay. Presentation of elf's number students of the month.
Grace Gilbert is the Elks November Female Student of the Month. Grace is a remarkable student who has always challenged herself academically by choosing a demanding academic schedule. She has been on the A honor roll principals list and also received an academic letter. Grace is currently our student council vice president and is the president and our representative on the Northeast Division of Student Council. She is also a member of the Minnesota Honor Society. Outside of the classroom, Grace actively participates on our girls' basketball team and track and field team as a captain in both. When not being actively involved at school, she works at Super One Foods, Idlewood Resort, and Shea Shea. Grace is planning to attend St. Thomas University in the fall to pursue her degree in physical therapy and play basketball. Grace Gilbert, the Elks November Female Student of the Month. Derek. Derek Telmich is the Elks November Male Student of the Month. Derek is a first-rate student and role model in our school and community. He is a member of the Minnesota Honor Society and is currently our Honor Society Vice President. Derek is currently taking concurrent enrollment classes at Falls High School, has been on the principals list, and currently carries a 4.0 GPA. Along with maintaining excellent grades in the classroom, he has been involved in the community helping with Ruby's pantry. Derek has also been a member of our cross-country team throughout his high school career. He currently works stocking shelves at Super One Foods. Derek is a hard-working and dedicated individual whose can-do attitude contributes to excellence in all that he does. Next year, he plans to attend either the University of Minnesota or the University of Wisconsin-Madison to major in electrical engineering or biomedical engineering. Derek Telmich, the Elks November Male Student of the Month.
I don't think there's one for open forum, is there?
Oh, just a little bit.
Item three, PBIS presentation.
No. I'm Loud.
I'm Carla Line and Maria Palman and Casey Quila, and we just wanted to take this opportunity. We had the privilege of attending a training for PBIS last Thursday in Duluth. At the training, each school shared what PBIS looks like while being implemented in their district. We really want to recognize and thank you for the support of PBIS. Because of you, we have been given the room to improve the lives of our students. Because of your support, we were completely able to revitalize the program this year.
Last week, we recognized the grade of the most hallway positive behaviors. We reinforced the behaviors earlier in the month and reminded them what we expected and rewarded the grade that had the most positive behavior by doing a hallway blitz. The grade that we were able to reward on Friday was 10th grade. Not only were they the grade that had the most positive blitz tickets in the office, but they also were able to lower their discipline referrals from September to October by 65%. So it's really neat that that coincided with that. On Friday, they were able to have an ice cream sandwich on us as our thank you for remembering to be polite in the hallways and show positive behavior.
I've graduated. I graduated college. This program not only recognizes students who are changing in their negative behavior, but also benefits the students that are continually showing Bronco power. It works for all of our students, and we appreciate your support. And we look forward to telling you more success stories as the years go on.
Maria, what is a blitz?
A blitz is where you teach something in expectation that you expect the students to know. And then after that, you have, we had paper tickets made up. And we would, in this case, walk the halls looking for maybe someone who picks up a paper for someone because they dropped it. Maybe they picked up garbage that wasn't theirs. Or they always have a smile on their face and they greet you when they walk down the hall. And we just kind of handed them out. And then the kids would bring them and put them in a bucket in the office, and we counted them at the end of the week. So we did that during our short week of November, that it was the 6th to the 8th or 5th to the 7th or something like that. And then we're able to share something special with them. It's really, we're so thankful for all of the support that you guys have given us because without everybody in this together, it would never happen. And there are so many neat things that we're going to get to do because of that support. And we wanted to make sure we said thank you.
It was more of, you know, it was kind of just being seatbelt where they, you know, focus more on certain things. They were doing the same thing, and the cops wanted to reinforce that they were going crazy watching for, you know, more than they needed.
Okay. So now we'll break it down to cafeteria and library, and say that different areas.
Okay. And why did you bring back from the training session, what were the most important points?
Well, during the training session, the first part was a, just kind of a booster, going over the basics of what PBIS is, remembering what the different pieces are that maybe you forget all over the years. I want to believe it was 2012 that we started up. So it's been a few years since we went to the initial trainings. And actually, I'm the only person on the PBIS team that was able to be at those initial trainings. So it was just kind of going over those basics. And in the afternoon, we looked at the data, crunched some numbers, tried to come up with a plan of some other things we'd like to implement. So it was a little bit of work time and a little bit of kind of review.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda items. Item one, approve past meeting minutes for the regular school board meeting of October 15th, 2018. Item two, approve past meeting minutes for the special board meeting held November 13th, 2018. Item three, approve current accounts payable due in amount of $1,5,774.79. Item four, approve payroll in amount of $407,098.82 for pay periods October 26th and November 9th. Item five, first reading of board policy, 5:30 immunization requirements. Item six, first reading of school board policy 602, organization of school calendar and school day. Item seven, first reading of school board policy 611, homeschooling. Item eight, first reading of school board policy 707, transportation of public school students. Item nine, first reading of school board policy 708, transportation of non-public school students. Item 10, first reading of school board policy 709, student transportation safety policy. Item 11, approve Wyatt Boyham and Eric Olson as volunteer coaches for the Boys Hockey 2018-2019 season. Item 12, accept resignation of Calvin Turbin, fireman, effective November 13th, 2018. Item 13, approve hire of Calvin Turbin as temporary boiler operations manager, effective November 14th, 2018, for the positions agreement dated November 13th, 2018. Item 14, approve the hire of Glenn Markcott as assistant girls' hockey coach contingent upon, one, there is enough student athletes to form a team for the majority of scheduled games, and/or, two, if partway through the season, there are not enough players for a team, the position would no longer be needed. Therefore, would be paid on a prorated basis for days worked. Item 15, approve the hire of Melinda Meyer as robotics advisor for 2018-2019 season. Item 16, approve increase in hours for Honey Hoopman cafeteria helper from 2.5 hours to 3 hours, effective October 22nd, 2018. Item 17, accept resignation of Amber Hempstead, paraprofessional, effective October 13th, 2018. Item 18, approve hire of Beth Reller as paraprofessional, effective October 31st, 2018. Item 19, approve hire of Justin Carney as paraprofessional, effective October 31st, 2018. Item 20, approve hire of Amber Zupas as a paraprofessional, effective November 5th, 2018. Item 21, approve hire of Wyatt Tessier as paraprofessional, effective November 5th, 2018. Item 22, approve hire of Christine Coller as assistant cook, effective November 5th, 2018. Item 23, accept resignation of Carolyn Peterson, paraprofessional, effective December 31st, 2018. Item 24, approve PSEO agreement with University of Morris for school year 2018-2019. Item 25, approve hire of Dan Sweeney as custodian fireman, effective December 31st, 2018, training time to occur between November 26th to effective start date. Item 26, approve hire of Will Offe as assistant boys' basketball, baseball coach for the 2018-2019 season. Item 27, approve two-year arena concessions agreement with International Falls Recreation Hockey Association, effective November 1st, 2018. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
After we approve, are we going to have any discussion?
We'll discuss.
I'll move it. A second.
I have a motion, a second discussion.
Who's second, Ms.?
Headed.
Okay. If I can add some comments first of all, and then open it up. Rox pointed out in policy 707, I marked it here, and I didn't check in the school board deal. Is there a type, I mean, that's how they have it worded. It's on page 7 of 707. It reads, "Transportation between home and school may also be provided in the discretion of the school district," which probably be at the discretion of the school, you know, but that's...
It's just a little typo.
Correct. So I have no problem changing that and putting that in the second reading. It does not change anything in my mind as far as the piece. I want you aware, on number 13, with the resignation of Mr. Turbin, we do not have anyone licensed with a first-class boiler license for the district. So in order to be legal and open the doors on the Wednesday when he was done, I put in place, there's a contract for an hour a day at overtime rate, it comes out to be $250 a week, for him to do these either until we get someone that can do them, or, yeah, until we get someone, or if he is going to no longer do them, he would give us two weeks' notice to find someone else because we legally have to have someone to oversee our boilers. So that was put in place, okay, for moving forward until we can get rid of them, okay? When you get to number 25, the committee interviewed for the custodian or the fireman to replace Mr. Turbin. And we had one person applied that has the required license, actually more so than a person that had a great resume, and that was not part of the group, and the committee is recommending the hire of Mr. Sweeney, okay? So I met with him and went through a bunch of questions, but also I'm recommending that he be placed. It's $21.46. It's the fourth step, okay, in a seven or, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight-step place. I did get a call today from Manstol, the ASME rep, feeling we didn't have a right to do that. And I guess, I haven't had time to investigate and talk with the attorney. I mean, I believe the board has a right to hire and place based on experience. Have we done it much with 510? No. Have we done it with like the teachers group, which is a different contract? But, and again, not saying it's fair, but sometimes people come with a different set of criteria. And there's other times when we don't have, you know what I'm saying, a group of 20 people to pick from. We've had to do that with teachers, you know, where only candidate we got has a master's degree and, you know, some experience. And so we, again, compensated, not saying 100%, but I think it's worthwhile. So anyway, she claims we did not have the right to do that. I said, well, from my standpoint, we need a licensed person, and we should have to go out to contract, which we're really doing right now, or there are companies that will do a contract and oversee. To me, that's not good practice. I said, we're going to figure out a way to do this. So I haven't seen the language yet. She understood it was being recommended and most likely would be acted on tonight. But we came to an agreement that we could put a separate, and I'm just throwing it out there, category in, and we came up like with chief fireman or something, do an MOU to take care of that, with starting at 21.46 and the top being 22.14, which is the top now, and just spread that out into eight steps. So I believe it's worthwhile for the district to do that and get a person very well qualified. But I struggle, I want to find out that if you, say when Mr., say when your diesel mechanic goes, if you came in and got someone with 20 years of diesel mechanic experience, I struggle that the board doesn't have the right to give them some experience. It doesn't say you have to place them on 20 years, but I don't think that's uncommon.
Why can't we do that again?
They're claiming it because it says year one, year two, year seven, year 14, that that has to be with the district. We're doing it, and she's giving me her verbal commitment that by, I have no reason to put this special, it does not create any special clause, they still have, you know, this person has low C word, you know what I'm saying, because they're starting on, it's just, we're giving them a slight pay adjustment. Like I said, I came to think what is a tentative agreement. It's doing no different than leaving them as a plain fireman and, you know, starting on your side. It's just... Yes, Rox?
I have some questions about, was that posted that they needed to have a bus license as well?
It's the same posting that goes out for any fireman. It's that they don't have to have, this person's had a bus in the past, but they have to get it within, the contract says within, I think it's 90 days, I didn't read the contract. Same thing, it has, it has certain requirements that they have to be able to do, lift certain amount, so on. Preference given or some wording like that for the fireman license. The difference this time is in the past, and again, we would, if this person was not, is not accepted, it would go back, the next most qualified person is a member of the union, but does not have the license. In the past, we've allowed the 510 members to post and get the license on our time. The problem is right now, zero in the district cap. So the contractual language says the district has a right, if we don't feel people are qualified, to go outside. And that's what I'm saying is, right now, we don't have an internal candidate, which we have in the past, meaning either administration, back when Mr. Peter had it, or Mr. Turbin, or even, I think, Mr. Thorpe years ago, there was a person on staff. So if we have that right now, I'd be all in favor of moving our internal people up. But right now, we don't have it, have it. And having to go to a person, like Mr. Turbin, for willing to work with us, he could have said $1,000.
Right.
You know, other than having to go look for someone else or whatever, that's not a good place to be. You know, and obviously, we're going to work as quick as we can to get additional people with a license. Ideally, it'd be great to have four people with first class. Again, they won't go into that special category recruitment just for the time you need for the single person.
So to make it clear, what you're saying is, the people that are already working at the school, none of them have that boiler makers license.
Not a first class.
A first class.
There's a special that anyone at any time, I believe, can take. Then, I think it takes a year before you can test for what's called second class. And then I think it takes two years from then before you can test for first class. That's technically what we need. Without, we needed the chief, which was another two years after that, but that is not correct.
Okay. And so the only thing, the Elks, this Dan has, he has the first class.
He has the chief.
Yeah. And he only needs to get the bus license.
Correct. Which he's had in the past. He'll, I believe, even though he's had it and he has class, he has, still going to have to run several tests, but that's no different. The majority of people we hired do not have bus driver license. We put a custodian breaks. We put them through the training, the charlie and gino at the bus garage, and they go take the test, and then go to the bench to do the driving test.
Okay.
The 26, the A committee is recommending Mr. Mason and Mr. Walls, and I'm not sure if anyone else was there, but they interviewed for assistant baseball, that's in front of you. And then 27, it just came, kind of dropped the ball, it's a two-year agreement, which we should have had before you. It expired a day of October. Rec is fine with the way it is, so I just changed the dates for the next two years, plus the district has a concern. I don't have the reformation, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Action items, resolutions of acceptance of gifts and donations. Whereas school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district, whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 states, the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the school board, International Falls Public Schools, ISC 361, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. District donations, for the 6th grade class trip, Emily Schultz, $20. Nicole Mann, $50. Jean Pike, $25. Hall of Fame, Dean Blaze, $400. Richard and Therese McBride, $20. Stuart Super One, $500. PCA Mill, International Falls, $1,000. Baseball Dugout Project, Minnesota Twins, $10,000. Bronco Baseball Booster, $1,000. Rainy River Community College, $2,500. Bronco Arena Scoreboard Sponsors, Stuart Super One, $1,500. True Star Credit Union, $1,000. Midco, $500. Yourcause.com to Falls Elementary School, $490. Susan and Dale White for varsity hockey jerseys, $4,525.40. Could I have a motion to approve, to accept, the gifts and donations? Make a motion. And a second? Is it the second, 20? Okay. Seven, motion by Heather, a second by Tony, to accept the gifts and donations. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion declared adopted. Administrative reports, Melissa Tate.
We are at 5:23. We were at 5:22 last month. We actually gained four new students, but we lost three students. We have Christmas concerts coming up on December 7th, and we have relay sets coming up on January 18th, which I guess will have another recording for then. And then we have another C4I day coming up this Wednesday, and that's something, that's a coaching for implementation day that we do with Learning Sciences International.
Okay, thank you. Tim?
Our enrollment is at 5:59. We're down two from last month. That's down 60 from last year this time. We will have parent-teacher conferences on Wednesday, December 12, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. for grades 6 through 12. We have our winter sports underway with Boys and Girls Hockey meeting starting this week, Girls Basketball next week, and then Boys Basketball the week after that. Everyone's practicing. We will continue with more staff training on this Wednesday. Like Missy said, we'll have a coaching for implementation day, and then that afternoon during our early hour, we'll have LSI training for all staff.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin Grover? Two things. First of all, everyone should have in front of you, a couple months ago, this is for September and through October, it asked for kind of a list of participation from community ed. So like I said, Rachel printed it off. It's two-sided. One side is the classes and how many participated. You can forget first from the last column, you know, the limits, they're usually not issued. But in the middle, so for instance, I just picked one prior to safety, which is 9, 9, 18, 16 kids participated. I mean, that's what this belongs to. Going down, Water Fitness, September through December, 17. And I guess I can't tell you if that's 17, you know, paying for the whole class, that's my assumption. If you want more than this, which I can understand, well, I guess my thought is to look at our representatives on the community ed board, and someone said, maybe we should have, you know, what are we making per class, which I can understand. But on the flip side, I don't want to get into micromanaging that too. I mean, I think with very, very acceptable to try to figure, you know, how profitable are we paying? What ones are making us lots of money, which ones aren't? But I guess my thought is that should be that, you know, overseen and saying, you know, asking those questions. And so I'm just throwing it out. This is a start. If you want more from me, let me know. If you want to leave it with, I forgot who right now is on the community ed.
Tony and Heather.
You know, that I would think that should be something they're looking at. The tough part, and we'd have to come to an agreement, like for instance, if I taught basketball, okay, you know, it's fairly easy, what registers paid, what I had for supplies, what I was paid. You can figure out, you know, that made us, you know, $42. Okay? It's a little different when we start putting like Rachel, you know, that's part of her job, but I think the answer salary is going to be higher, but she's offering more too, you know, it's kind of like me picking up some of the, what do I say, administrative assistant. I'm doing it because I'm there and I'm putting in the time. She's doing it because she's there, putting in the time. So we have to figure out, you know, if we want this, isn't, like you say, you know, make two separate lists, you know, one for contracted employees, you know, that offer that aren't Rachel. It's a start. That's where we're at. That's what she provided. Open to conversation, if you want, right now, before I go on.
I would just say, just the details we talked about before and what you alluded to, the, like, expenses per class, the fees, so you end up with some sort of a return on the class. They have ECFE classes though, why are there no numbers in there?
I can't answer that because Manny's running.
Right. And I know they're happening, so it just must be awful.
I know that. And they aren't to a point, because I had asked, if you recall, I think it was last year, there was a section in time where we actually had...
Carbler, was that two years ago that you taught?
Two years ago. And I asked her, because starting out, you never know, and I just mentioned to Manny, you know, numbers are high. It's a good thing. Let me know. And I saw her one time, and everything was good so far. It's right around 20, I think, which is a max, but she was fine with it, so. Second thing, tomorrow night, Tuesday, 6 o'clock, we have the open house at the arena. Everyone is invited publicly, as well as school board. Just so you're aware, the plan is to do a short ceremony at 5:50. I have a short lesson, one page, thank you, to issue and talk about what we've done and what is yet to come. Thank you, eight, to the community as well as the people that done the work. We'll do a short ribbon cutting. My thought is, any more members that's there, I have purple and gold ribbon, and we'll kind of twist together and have scissors for everyone, do that, and then we're going to have a ceremonial drop. And for the most part, that's 5:50, we'll be going by 6 o'clock. Thank you to Miss Hebner, and I don't know if anyone else has helped her, but she did help out in kind of spearheading some extras. There is hot chocolate, cookies being provided by Rec Hockey. There is popcorn being offered by Figure Skating. There, the K Coalition, the grant that we have, is going to set up a table and do, you know, have some giveaways and stuff like that.
The cheerleaders will be there, the band will be there, the mascot will be there.
Boys hockey?
Boys hockey will be there, Figure Skaters will be there.
Boys hockey will be there, Figure Skaters will be there. And we have Hannah Coleman singing the National Ball.
So. Who's doing the puck drop?
Mary Anderson is the one that I asked, kind of as AE of Elks, but she's been a supporter of, I would say, activities for a long time. Secondly, he was part of the group that helped organize the referendum, and so that's why I asked him to be excited. Game at 6:00. And like I said, we're, say, and if someone can't make it, there's no requirement. You know, it's just, and again, if we are there, again, it's not a formal meeting, we can do this. I advise not more than three of us to sit next, three of you to sit together if you stay and watch the game. But maybe, um, a formal meeting. December meeting, just a reminder that we will, we will get our audit in December, so they'll be here to present, we'll do that, early on so they can get going. If we're done by now, we have to sit here until 6 o'clock, because we will have the truth of taxation at 6:00. We can't do it. Other than that, I don't have any last minute questions.
Do we have a different student representative?
Ellen sent you to the...
I mean, or...
We put it in the announcements and I haven't, I didn't get any letters.
But did she, she told me she was going to continue.
She may have talked to Rachel, because in the handbook, the way it is, it's student council makes the determination. It's like, me and student council makes the determination of the person who sits on the school board.
Okay.
And I was out a lot this fall, so.
Yeah.
But I did go in the announcements after that last meeting, you requested, so. Get something in late, by next month.
Great. Any other committee reports?
I'm not a committee, but I do want to report as a follow-up to Mark Thorpe's request as part of a follow-up. I'm going to do a signage training, a two-hour training for paras on workshop day in hopes that the paras can continue to follow through on a weekly training. And I'm volunteering my time, so it won't cost the district anything on my end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the rec, the rec committee doesn't meet till this Wednesday, so.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn at 5:33.
I'll make that motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.